Welcome to our regular February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting of the Forsyth County Commissioners. Chair Martin will participate remotely today. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from Bishop Jason Romney, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by Commissioner McDaniel. Let's please stand.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to meet in civil discourse, and we're grateful for those who are giving of their time in service of the members of our community. We ask, we ask thy blessings upon our commissioners as they weigh these important matters, that they will have the wisdom and insight that they need to build consensus and find resolution to these important questions and challenges. We ask for thy blessing to be on the members of our community, that we might find mutual love and respect for one another and build each other up and build the community that, that we all want. We ask for these things and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Bishop. We appreciate it. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, please call three-three-six, four-two-two, one-two-zero-zero. You will be placed on hold until the public session begins. Members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card and return to the clerk. I will repeat the number that you may call, three-three-six, four-two-two, one-two-zero-zero. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the petition to close Von Road. Shaleed Bowen, Mount Forsyth Director, will give a brief overview of the request. Ms. Bowen?
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so we've went over this item a few times. I'll keep this brief, but this is the closing of Von Road. The petitioner was Zahara Cohen, the property owner, whose this road is acting as her driveway. Olive Von Road is located in Forsyth County. Both the Planning and Development Services staff for City County and State DOT have concluded that no negative impacts would be had from closing Von Road. The public hearing date is today, and signs were posted as of January twelfth. Here is an overview of the property. There's Von Road that is acting as the driveway for Mrs. Cohen, and then it's on the corner of Windswept Drive and Craig Road. Here is just a map showing that Olive Von Road is in Incorporated Forsyth County. And then here is the letter that we received from State DOT to have the road closed. Are there any questions?
Are there questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Speakers will have up to fifteen minutes total to speak in favor of this request and up to fifteen minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? I will declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion?
Took.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bessie and second by Commissioner Linville. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Commissioner Martin, thank you. That is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the meeting of February first, two thousand twenty-four. There's a motion by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Bessie. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Raise your hand. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, Mr. Manager, I will turn the agenda over to you.
Vice Chair, we have one caller on the line.
Okay. Let's proceed with that.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. The session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jackie Seebolt. Forty-one fifty-three Gray Tuck Drive.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes and a warning will be given. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The last time I spoke was at the November meeting, and I spoke about the sandblasting issue that is taking place at Piedmont Hoist and Crane on Temple School Road. Today, I'm calling in to find out if there have been any updates received on the steps that the owner of the company said he would take to be, quote, "a good neighbor." The owner said that there were plans to install fencing as a noise barrier and some type of drape system that was going to be added to the outdoor tents where the outside sandblasting still occurs. Earlier this month, there was a Saturday sandblasting session that took place on the weekend of February the third, and that following week, the Environmental Department was called and did come out because, again, there was outside sandblasting occurring and a huge plume of dust was pouring on the Temple School Road. The residents of Gray Tuck Drive, along with all the other people who have impacted or being impacted by this sandblasting, I just feel like we've been very patient and want to know if this owner has followed through or has plans to follow through with the solutions that he said he would do. And that's really all I was calling for today and hope that we can get some good news or some positive feedback on maybe something happening. Thank each of you for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, would you like to do an update?
Actually, at your place, what I've been doing is I've asked both Kyle Haney and Moner to give me an update, particularly heading into the formal meeting dates. And so you've got one there. I will provide a copy of that to Ms. Seebolt, and I have just sent it to Commissioner Martin, realizing he's not here, so.
Thank you.
We'll make sure and get those periodic updates to them.
Thank you so much. So again, I will turn.
Okay, unless we have anybody in the audience that has no cards.
There's none.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, so good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon that we've worked through over the last couple of weeks. And so I'll go ahead and dive into these. First item is Item Four. It is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of interest earnings in the Pandemic Response Special Revenue Fund and the transfer to the General Fund. You've got an associated budget ordinance amendment. So this particular item takes care of some interest earnings that have been accumulated there around $2 million. We're doing two things with them. Three hundred ninety-five thousand of that would actually go to pay for a program compliance position. It is, I think, in our best interest to pay for that actually out of the General Fund because we want to avoid that. That person will be working on things that are non-ARPA-related, and by paying for it out of the General Fund, we don't have to worry about limiting their activities to just ARPA activities. So from an efficiency perspective, it makes a ton of sense, and it also keeps us in compliance. So $395,000 for that purchase, a million six hundred and five thousand to the General Fund. As you know, the last three years, we've applied a little over $6 million to each of those annual budgets from revenue loss. Heading into this year's budget, there is going to be an impact, and this would mitigate that impact by about $1.6 million using interest revenue to do that. That'll push us off and let us sort of phase out of that as we go into revaluation next year after this budget year. So that's sort of the nature of that agenda item.
Is there a motion? Move approval by Commissioner Bessie. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Are there questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Commissioner Martin?
Is he frozen?
I believe he is frozen.
I believe he is, too.
What do we need to do, protocol with that?
You could just declare that it passed six-zero.
Okay. It was approved six to zero.
All right.
Thank you.
We have a number of grants items. Item Five is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the National Environmental Health Association for the Forsyth County Department of Public Health to support the Environmental Health Division Food and Lodging Division. You've got an associated budget ordinance amendment that appropriates $12,500 for staff training and equipment.
Move approval.
Approval by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Are there questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. That is six-zero. Approval.
Agenda Item Six is an amendment to the FY twenty-four budget. It appropriates $3,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission, and this carries over funds from the previous year to allow us to do that drawdown.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Linville. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is approved six-zero.
Agenda Item Seven is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Duke University Research Institute Development Team for Forsyth County Emergency Services. You've got an associated budget ordinance amendment there. It appropriates really the current portion of a $155,000 grant in the amount of $1,750.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is approved six-zero.
All right. We have several contractual matters. Item Eight is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Masters Touch LLC. It provides additional print, processing, and mailing services for the Forsyth County Board of Education. There was a notification required for the change of voting locations, and so we needed some additional funding for that. This is in the amount of not to exceed $128,000. I did hear from Tim Suji today that the estimated number of notices that had to be sent is actually lower than expected. And so while we're going to appropriate $125,000, we'll spend a little bit less than that, but that'll give them some dollars in case something comes up in the election.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner McDaniel.
Vice Chair, I do want to make the county manager aware that I saw a few people downstairs still confused about coming over here for early voting. So I'm not sure what else can be done to make sure that the citizens know that this is not location for early voting.
I'll pass that along to our Elections Director.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's approved six-zero.
Agenda Item Nine is a resolution ratifying and authorizing issues in an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and Wilkes County, and it provides A-1C screening for the Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. We'll be providing some classes actually in Wilkes County. This covers some of the cost of testing, which will be reimbursed by the state fund.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous.
Commissioner Martin is back, so.
He's back.
All right. Agenda Item Ten is a resolution authorizing issues in an agreement with AVCON Engineers and Planners Incorporated for landfill assessment. We are actually seeking, as we look to develop sixty-four acres on that airport campus for the environmental, really assess the environmental conditions, seeking a finding of no significant impact. And so the design and consulted piece of that is not to exceed $87,708.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Questions or comments? Mr. Bessie?
Let me just reconfirm. This is land that does not need to be rezoned. It has the prepared zone already.
That is correct.
That was my understanding. Thank you. Just in case anybody asks, I'll double check.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous.
Have several property matters. Item Eleven is a resolution authorizing a donation of county-owned real property located at eight-nine-ninety Oak Grove Road to the Board of Trustees for Forsyth Technical Community College pursuant to the general statute as listed there. This essentially, as you know, consolidates ownership so that they can use some state funds to actually improve that property.
I'd like to move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McDaniel. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Are there comments or questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous.
Agenda Item Twelve is a resolution declaring the remaining articles of personal property located within the Hall of Justice property surplus to the needs of the county and authorizing their disposition via public electronic auction.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner McDaniel and Commissioner Linville. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous.
Agenda Item Thirteen is a resolution approving refunds by the tax collector from the amount of $13,170.93 from the North Carolina Vehicle Tax System.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Linville. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous.
All right. And the final item on this agenda is Item Fourteen. It is a resolution acknowledging receipt of the tax collector's report of the total amount of unpaid 2023 taxes that are liens on real property and ordering the tax collector to advertise such liens. I know John Burgess is in the audience, if I saw him. Any updated information that you need to share with that?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Linville. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous.
All right. So that is it. I have confirmed with our technicians, our guys in the back, that we can actually, you can adjourn this, and we don't need to take a break since that was pretty quick, and we can dive into our other item. You do have a closed session after the briefing.
Move adjourn.
Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted, I understand that there recently have been some questions raised about why the commission goes so quickly typically for most items on voting meetings, and that is because we have the previous week an in-depth, detailed public briefing session at which most matters can be worked out and resolved. So I want to issue a special invitation for anyone who is under the misimpression that the commission does not have substantive discussion about both items, to participate or observe online, if that is more convenient for them, the second briefings on the Thursday before the voting meeting.
That's great information. Thank you for sharing that with the public. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Move adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Okay, so I can, I call the, we'll adjourn, and I call the briefing session to order.
All right. So today, we do not have any discussion items. You do have a matter for closed session immediately following. I think y'all are in the large conference room, and I'll read that motion when we get through. Just a quick overview of what we are working on for the detailed review next Thursday. We have a fairly straightforward agenda, but I'll go ahead and dive into this one. So if you've got that in front of you, we have three special resolutions. There is something that we've been working on for quite some time, which is an ordinance ordering the Community Economic Development Department of Forsyth County to remove or demolish a structure unfit for human habitation and otherwise to effectuate the purchase of the Forsyth County Minimum Housing Code. So it's a property on Pine Hall Road that has really been a tough, tough property, a lot of vandalism, a lot of illegal dumping, and so on and so forth. Y'all are aware of that. It is air property, and so we are taking this one sort of through that full process. And so it will be a good one because there are other ones coming. We've built a pretty strong minimum housing code enforcement effort, and they have lots of work underway. They all take a lot of time, and this will be kind of a good first, first one of these. Probably done three or four of these in my history here, but we've got some great staff, and so you'll hear from them. The second item is Union Cross Rescue, Fire Rescue. That volunteer fire department is basically saying to you that they intend to buy a new fire truck. And so in the agreements that we have with those volunteer fire departments, it stipulates that we'll make sure that everybody's aware of that. And so, you know, really to avoid the idea that they go off, commit future tax revenues or a future tax increase for that purpose. And so we sort of take those up as we go. And so we receive that, so we'll be talking about that. The third one is a resolution authorizing the expansion of the scope of use of funds. Some time ago, we set aside a fairly significant amount of money for a vehicle electrification program. We've been working on that. The infrastructure is underway, and we're in design and work on that. What we have found as we've looked at the marketplace around electric equipment is the market that has actually developed the most and gotten really competitive is really the landscape equipment market. And so what you're going to hear is a recommendation of us to, let's use some of those dollars to buy some zero-turn equipment and some of the lawn maintenance equipment that we use, and let's go with sort of an electric pilot on that. We've tested that equipment. It's pretty price competitive. That equipment, when it uses gas or diesel, is, creates a lot of pollutants, and so this will be a sort of a step into that. There will be, we're not going to try to use all that money. I mean, there'll still be dollars there to move forward with vehicle electrification. We've just not seen the supply side of the market develop in the vehicle market like we've seen it with the equipment. And so that's what we will talk a little bit about then. Have a number of budget and finance items. You've got really a correction or a housekeeping matter with some JCPC dollars for the general crime prevention, so that's fairly straightforward. You do have a grant matter to apply for some Golden Leaf funds that are available for site development, marketing, and those kinds of things. And so you'll hear from Kyle Haney and his group on that. There are, most of this agenda actually are ARPA items that we've already talked about a little bit, and those are those contract modifications to extend for extensions. And in one case, it's actually appropriating some dollars that Greater Winston Inc., they were not included in the first contract that they had. And so some ARPA matters with respect to that. Other contractual matters, we've got on the agenda, I think it has been moved out. We were going to purchase some computers as part of our replacement program. Gary Koontz has actually asked us to pull that, so you'll see that on a later agenda. There is approval of a sole source purchase for an analyzer, a piece of equipment that Public Health is going to use to determine lead and soil and paint that can help with keeping folks safe with those contaminants. And so that request is out there. Item Eighteen is a resolution authorizing an execution agreement to provide a micro-transit service for employment-related transportation that's really being handled through the EDTAP dollars and ROAP dollars that are out there. Purchase of a couple of some equipment. You see some trucks and some other SUV-type vehicles that were requesting purchasing. And then some property matters. There's a utility easement for some county-owned property at Shallowford Road, which I believe is our library out there. So it is actually a pretty straightforward agenda as we kind of head into that. Just a reminder that next Thursday morning, we will meet on the fourth floor, I believe. Is that correct? So we're going to be on the fourth floor starting at nine o'clock, and we'll have our winter work session. We will, I'll get you the background materials on those. We're pushing hard to try to get those to you Monday and Tuesday. I'm going to, we're going to work hard to try to make sure there's nothing that you don't get in advance that you see before you walk in that session. There's, we're working hard on some of the financial information, the mid-year financial report you might not see. But until we get in there, just because of time and trying to work in conjunction with the audit work that's going on to make sure that we give you the best data possible. But I'll get the first cut of that information out tomorrow afternoon with the sort of detailed agenda, and then whatever I don't get out, I will try to get out. agenda, and then whatever I don't get out, I will try to get out to you by close of business on Monday. But next Thursday here, we'll be talking about county financial, sort of where we are, budget drivers as we head into the budget. This really is the kind of the kickoff of the budget process every year. We're going to do, you'll see some information about housing affordability. You'll see some of the products that the Environmental Sustainability Group, workgroup that we have, that's an internal staff group's been working on, so we actually have a draft policy and plan that you might want to consider taking up. You'll also hear about progress on projects that they've been involved in. We're going to do an update on the EMS system, kind of where we are improvement that we've seen, but some of the still challenges that we have out there. So what did I miss? I always miss one.
Citizen survey.
The citizen survey. So you'll get the citizen survey in advance, but like you did two years ago, you'll hear from the survey, the company that prepared the survey, and it'll help interpret what some of the responses are there. So lots of information coming to you over the next week, and we'll be, hopefully have a great session next Thursday morning to kick off the budget.
Could I ask if anyone is interested in further questions or information next week's briefing for the March 7th formal meeting? If you need something before next Thursday.
About the second briefing item? Thank you, ma'am. Just a note, I'll be interested in seeing the details on the resolution authorizing execution of an agreement to provide a microtransit service.
And that agenda should be live Tuesday?
Yes, the agenda is published by 2:00 PM on Tuesday.
And also, before we adjourn for our closed session, I'd like for you all to know, we had a wonderful ribbon cutting today for our new Colladium. I encourage everybody to go over and go through. It's absolutely fascinating. We had a drone who delivered the ribbon, and we had robots who pulled the ribbon out for us to cut. It was quite interesting. It's a new day, but it was a great occasion, and we're so thankful for the staff who has worked for a long, long time on this project, and they have just done a wonderful job. Thank you, General Services. Thank you, Damon. Thank you, Dudley. Thank you, everybody who was involved. It was a great day. I'm sorry you missed it, Dr. Martin. You would have loved it.
You know, I got out and talked a little bit to Staff and General Services about that, and they are so proud. These are guys who are doing the inspections and really guiding, working with the general contractor to make sure things met, that we got our money's worth out of that project. And, you know, projects like this, James probably can say it, I don't know if James back there or not, but when you get to do a project like that, they really are sort of capstone career kind of moments, and I heard a lot of that today, and so it's, and you heard a little bit of that from Mike Lancaster with Frank L. Bloom, that because it is a very visible community asset, it means a lot. So it's fun when you see that pride in the people who really made it happen, and I know Damon feels that way. Shout out a couple of those guys' names, if you will, that were really involved in that one. That'd be great.
Andy in General Services. Andy Simmons, James Anderson obviously was involved heavily in it, John Nance. That team that was there regularly, checking behind the contractor, and they're all kind of looking to make sure that the different features are where they should be and that they're putting it in a quality way, and Elizabeth Dampier and her staff from Colladium was also very involved there every day. They actually, I think, her office was moved to their trailer like on-site so she could be there regularly to keep an eye on the project, to help it move along and happen like it did.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, folks, for this, it's not just a job. It really is meaningful for those folks, and I heard a lot of that. It's good.
I'd like to say, I agree with your sentiments, and I just can't wait to get my grandbaby, and we catch the bus, and then we come, walk down to the Colladium. It's going to be a great day, so thank you. I agree. It was a good day today.
It was a great day.
And it's a great day for the community, so I need to say thank you to the community as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. All right, ready for the closed session motion? Need to ask the board to consider a motion to go into closed session to discuss a matter to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer, employee, or prospective public body, officer, employee pursuant to the provisions of General Statute 143, 31811A6. And since there's no other business to come forward, the board at this meeting, following the closed session meeting, will be adjourned.
Motion by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, please raise your hand. We are adjourned, moving to.